For this meeting then?
She didn't say for this meeting.
But she's calling in, all right, then I'm not going to worry about it.
Hold over shortly.
Would you? Jordan?
Right up to him now.
Start with this?
Meeting over to you, yes.
Okay. So I am Jordan Beeden with Burbank Aquatics, mechanical engineer. Dealt with a lot of the investigation of the Glenwood Aquatic swimming pool. And essentially what this is going to be is almost majority of our findings and kind of what that's going to lead into.
Okay, thank you.
So a little background on the pool, as you know, the pool opened in two thousand seventeen. Most of this information was taken off of your Facebook website using that, so. They closed in twenty twenty-two for the whole season due to some broken pipe fittings and overall water loss. That picture on top right shows the repaired T fittings from that closure. And during that time, there was noticeable slab settlement in the campus space that likely caused that breakage. The deep end pool joints were resealed and broken fittings replaced in April twenty twenty-three. Additional leaks were discovered and repaired in May twenty twenty-three as well. The water feature out of the pipe leak was discovered in June twenty twenty-three. And then we were brought on in twenty twenty-four in Eagle Engineering. And Jake noted a roughly twenty thousand dollar per twenty thousand gallon per day water loss at the time, which is roughly three and a half inches of water per day. So the investigation objectives, step one, obviously locating the sources of water loss. And then the next step would be develop a comprehensive repair plan. This is the evaluation assessment slash approach. The the group of consultants that we acquired, obviously Eagle Engineering, the city engineer for Glenwood. They completed some elevation measurements for us. Us, Burbank Aquatics, the architect and architect and engineer dealt with vessel and system assessment. Rico Construction is a mechanical contractor. They did our a lot of our onsite testing for us, dye testing, pipe pressure testing and the concrete extraction. Albertson Engineering, we brought on as a structural engineer to do a ground penetrating radar investigation of the pool concrete floor and an overall structural design review. Chosen Valley Testing was also brought on to do some further investigation of the soils beneath the swimming pool. I know there was one prior to the construction, but we wanted to see what was done after construction, so we brought on Chosen Valley. So let's go chronological order or as far as time wise. So this was in September of two thousand twenty-four. We had Rico Construction do some dye testing of the pool vessel while there was still water in the pool. This is just a little bit of the procedure, obviously, pool's full, turned off all the pumps, extracted several locations of joint filler. And then prep syringes with fluorescent dye. The image there is the exact brand of dye that we used. It's very easy to locate in the water and it's the same density as the water, so it flows with the same way that water flows. So we prepped the syringes and then injected the dye near those exposed joints. What this is trying to do is test the water stop. Not necessarily the joint itself, but underneath where there is a water stop. So and then we recorded the dye travel. This is one of many videos that we've recorded, this is one of the worst locations I've ever discovered. Yeah, the point of that, you can kind of see at the end there when the dye flares out, that really should be what you're seeing. That should be floating on the surface, not escaping at that joint. This was reported by a diaper that we had hired or Rico had brought on. So he did the deep end stuff, I myself did all the shallow end. And you'll see a lot of what we found was located in the deep end. All those yellow points are areas where dye was lost. So we have all those enumerated and all those videos are on file. I'm not sure if we sent them to you, but obviously those will be available if you need them. So yeah, pretty much everything in the deep end except for two locations and then four additional locations noted in the shallow areas. I'd like to note the bottom joint there where there was no dye loss. I'll come up later on the slides, just make note of that. So following that, when the pool's empty, Rico Construction also did some pressure testing with the pool empty. The drain outlets, water features, floor inlets, wall and water supply were all pressure tested. It was a little hard to pressure test the gutters the way that the pool's constructed, so we just did a static water test on that. And then that is just the extraction that Rico Construction had to do in order to test the in the pipe. So this is some of our findings, we documented every pressure. All the yellow is good pressure on those pipes, no pressure loss. Orange is there was a leak and then red is no pressure hold, so severe damage. And then that is in the technical space. So the findings are the failed pipes include the heater supply side stream, which is that top red one. It's where the water comes out of the filters, goes down underground and then into the heater bank. And then also the zero depth bubbler three, which is on the left side there. In red, and there's also a, I think, zero depth bubbler four is failed. So leaking pipes are the water feature supply and outlet piping, everything else is sound. And then following that, we did a concrete sounding. What that includes is going around the pool while it's empty and tapping a hammer throughout the pool floor and listening for irregularities in sound. It's actually an AST testing method, so. And then on the right side, that is all the locations that we noted irregularities in the sound from concrete indicating some sort of hollow or delaminated concrete. And then one thing to note, it did consist with all the locations of dye being lost. And then so following that, that brought on the need to explore the structural integrity of a pool and determine where there are hollows or voids underneath the pool as indicated by the sounding. So this was completed by Albertson Engineering. That is the GSSI scanner that they used. What it does essentially is send sound wave or radar waves down and essentially measures densities and it comes back. You can see on the right side, those blue arrows are pointing to rebar. Albertson also noted the bottom of the slab in the red. On the left side is what it should look like for under grade material. And then on the right side of that green line is also concrete. So it's just something, some things to look for. The procedure order is that he did six to seven foot lengths of scans at two foot intervals and focused areas around the joints and then interpreted the scans around the apparent voids. And then here are some of the findings. Several multiple apparent void areas, areas are consistent with the horizontal concrete and the dye loss locations. Suggest water leaks are eroding the subgrade below the pool floor next to the footings. And Albertson's report goes much deeper into depth than this presentation does. So as you can see on the right side, those red areas are where we found apparent voids. There are voids beneath the pool floor and above the footings. And also some of which which are traveling past the footings hinting at some erosion of the sediment.
Can you tell how deep?
The, I mean, just inches.
Just inches?
Yeah.
Okay.
No several feet voids right now. From what you're saying, I mean, you'll have to read into the report. Pretty much, this is just one set area of the pool. The medium depth areas are also similarly with less and less voids as you get shallower. So here's the structural review completed by both the AI and Albertson. A couple of things to note, that the floor is a light duty, six inch floor slab. A single five, number five rebar at twelve inches center to center each way. And then, let's see. Inch and a quarter at intersection without saying is the thickness of rebar plus another thickness of rebar. That's giving you clearance of rebar there. Rebar clearance to the top surface is inch and a half and then three inches to the grade as indicated on their structural drawings completed by that engineer who built the pool. There's also a four inch PVC water stop noted on the right side there. Those barbell looking callouts are the water stops. One thing to note is there is no vertical reinforcing on any of the the footings to floor slabs except for the one joint. That joint is that joint that we did not find water loss.
So the one joint that was reinforced is the joint that didn't have the water loss, the ones that weren't reinforced?
If you can see on the left, that is the joint with vertical reinforcement. You see this. Yeah, I can use this. So this piece of rebar is connecting the footing to the floor slabs. This is at the bottom of the transition slope. This is the only location that they had called out for vertical reinforcing. As you can see, this is the middle footing at the center of the pool. And this is at the bottom and at the medium depth sides, no vertical reinforcing.
Why would there only be one joint with the vertical reinforcement?
That's a good question.
Yeah, that was going to be my question, which like, what's the, was that the way, was it supposed to be done or should they?
These are all original details from the plan set that we received for construction. These notes are all from Albertson in red and blue, not from the original drawings. So and then one thing we did notice from your Facebook site, there was construction photos. So we did, were able to kind of confirm what actually did occur during construction. A couple of things to note, you can see these rebars sticking out. That's that joint that only had the vertical in the absence everywhere else in the footing. This white PVC is the water stop. Another thing to note is the lack of care at some locations as far as setting the water stop. So yeah, just a couple of things to note for what we were able to note during construction.
And when these, when the plans are put together, who reviews those to make sure that they're meeting all of the qualifications? Or this is more of a process question, not necessarily?
Yeah, I mean, they should have had qualified engineers on staff. It's their responsibility to give a proper design to you. You could do peer review, I guess, but it's unlikely that occurred.
Each engineer is going to do it a little bit different.
Yeah.
I was talking with Burbank and how they do things, they've had some suggestions that we would have done this or usually typically do. Unfortunately, it's up to the engineer and review staff to put their name on it. So obviously we're seeing some lack of some things here that maybe they didn't think they need, but after construction we're seeing.
Right.
We're rather into what we're seeing with the results of it all, so.
Sure, so to understand why only one of those was reinforced as opposed to all of them, it would have, we'd have to go back to the original?
You'd have to ask them.
Engine, okay.
Two things, they would try to do it everywhere, but it's definitely not a detail, we just lucked out on every other detail.
And is that a huge increase in cost? Could that have been a reason that?
The vertical reinforcement? No.
Okay.
I don't think so. I mean, you can find the price of rebar and equate it and just set it in there, no more labor.
Got it.
So yeah, that kind of followed into the next investigation, which was the slab extraction. What we wanted to do is check on the condition of the water stop. So we did two three foot by three foot sections. So yeah, we maintained the water stop in its current condition. We were able to observe the subfloor condition and observe rebar, concrete design and placement. Just confirming the engineering details or what was actually put there. So our findings, floor thickness actually ranged from four to six inches. As we mentioned earlier, it was a six inch design thickness. The water stop is intact, however, not consolidated around it. We confirmed there's no vertical reinforcement in those locations we noted. And then that rebar is in contact with the water stop, leading to poor consolidation, essentially at each rebar location. So if you look at the photo, this is showing the thickness of concrete. This is at that central footing. And this is also at the central footing. This is a, one of the twelve, one of the number five rebars, which is twelve inches in their center. So this is occurring at essentially every twelve inches if I do joints. You can see there is a connection between the rebar and the water stop, essentially not allowing the concrete cream to be able to consolidate around the water stop, making it really ineffective. And then here's a side profile showing there's a depression from where the contractor took out the piece of rebar, you can see that dentil. So if you're having any movement, it's just kind of worse than that, that condition.
What do the water stops do or what are they supposed to do?
So if you have my, go back a couple of slides?
Sure.
Okay, so at this joint here, this is at your wall, the floor joint. You have, you have your footing and at your wall, you have a water stop as well. So essentially when there's, you know, five to twelve foot head pressure, that's through your pool, that water is going to want to escape down this construction joint and want to flow each way out the back side of the wall and through the bottom of the pool. So the intent was to stop that with the water stop, which is typical design for pool construction. The water stop, if placed properly, should have done its job. But and you can kind of see in this detail how much clearance there really is not to work with. Four inch water stop, that's two inches of exposure or peak through. And then, like I said, inch and a quarter of rebar and then an inch and a half to top of this slab. So there's not much room for air there. And that's kind of what we've seen when we opened up the pool floor and found this condition. Okay.
And the design was for six inches, so in the areas where you found it to be four, was that due to it was only laid at four? Or it was erosion that took away the other two inches?
So that four inches was probably the placement of that footing was a little high. So, you know, that's essentially the depth that they, you know, excavated. And then they put that footing in and they probably found that it was a little high and then just poured concrete over it and ended up being four inches. Just the condition we needed to note at that spot. So yeah, the final or the next investigation we did was the geotechnical that was completed by Chosen Valley. They just completed one test boring at a depth of twenty-six feet and then did soils testing after. What they did find was a lean clay fill directly below the pool slab up to a four foot depth. So this boring was taken about in the middle of the pool, so it's already four feet down. So you have another four feet and then you get to to the end of that lean clay. And that's a fill, that's not a native material. And if you looked at the original geotechnical report before construction, that fill was onsite and it was noted. So they just put concrete on top of it with essentially a six inch drainage material beneath the pool to that soil. And then after that four foot depth of soil, there's another lean clay, that's a natural occurring lean clay in this area, it's called molasses. And that's at a four foot depth way down to twenty foot or twenty-two feet depth. And then both of those soils are considered highly frost susceptible. And then after that twenty-two feet, you get to glacial till. And groundwater was located at twelve foot at the, below the top of the boring, so probably fifteen, sixteen feet below grade.
From an engineering standpoint, what is highly frost susceptible?
So essentially, if there's moisture in the soils and you go through your winter cycle, those soils are very expansive with the presence of moisture.
Okay.
So a lot of forces, upward and outward forces. So yeah, that leads us to the last investigation, which was the elevations that Eagle completed for us throughout the winter or fall, spring and for fall, winter, spring season. Essentially, the takeaways are there are significant movements upwards of two inches plus or minus between fall and spring. So when, when it freezes, there is significant movement. These larger movements were at the deeper end, gets less and less severe as you go towards the shallower depths. There is some negative movement occurring. If you look at the top right graphic, that kind of explains why you might expect some downward movement, even though there's expansion going on. What we expected is some sort of levering going on, so it's pushing up, tilting down. And if you note, this is a void, a possible void that Albertson located. If you remember the GPR findings. So there is room for movement due to those voids. And then any outward movement is just a complete vertical force. And we did note that the water stop is not as close to the wall as designed. It is, you know, closer to the end of the footing for reasons I'm not sure, but that's where they placed it. So with all this movement, the water stop is doing a lot of, you know, compression, elongation, moving a lot. And we already know that it doesn't have proper consolidation around it. So any movements is kind of worse than that condition. So yeah. So and then the measurements that Eagle took in the, in the spring went back down to about one tenth of a foot to two tenths of a foot. We predict that if you build a pool, that it's going to settle back down to where it was in the fall. So yeah, that was the elevations. And that leads me to the summary, I apologize for reading this word for word, but I want to get it right.
Because I can read it, it's too tiny.
The Aquatic Center has been consistently dealing with issues of water loss through its years of operation and water loss rate has increased each season of operation. The forces of the pool floor resulting from frozen subgrade has caused the floor to rise as much as two inches per winter. The adverse floor movement and inadequate waterproofing in structural connection between the floor and concrete footings allows water to leak at high rates. Our leakage at the pool floor joints is apparently eroding base material creating voids under the pool floor. Pool structure movement has caused pipe breaks and leaks. Our recommendations, continued use of the pool in its current condition will have high operation costs and increased deterioration of the pool vessel and pipe network integrity. The geotechnical evaluation recommendation to remedy the pool vessel's structure, structural support requires removal of up to five feet of existing soil and under the pool. The soil should be replaced with non-frost sensitive soil. Additionally, given the presence of groundwater, an active dewatering system should be installed. A full envelope of free draining based wall back fill is required for an effective dewatering system. These remedies, along with an improved pool vessel structural design, requires a full pool vessel replacement solution. That's, goes on to questions.
That's a permanent watering system that will be in place?
Yes, well, to go back to the construction photo, what we recommend, obviously, is that five foot envelope. I did bring a little bit of a show and tell to kind of express that point of what we're talking about. Oh, I didn't really capture in these photos, but essentially there is no granular material next to the pool wall. We know that for a fact, we've seen it in the construction photos, so there is no movement of water on the side of the pool. They did put that gray material, that gray rock for a six inch drainage. It just wasn't, isn't sufficient for the amount of groundwater and the amounts of, you know, frost susceptible soils that you have underneath there. This is, I know it's a little self pointyish, but just to show you the amount of granular drainage material that we typically design with, it's the hanging area and then with an underdrain system completely around it. So I mean, that's essentially what we would try to design for, but wasn't provided in this. Any questions?
Sunny, so I. I would start with, how long would it take to fix it? I mean, what's that process? We said, let's fix it, then my asking, I'm like, but.
Does that mean tearing away the entire existing structure and redoing everything from scratch? Is that what you're hearing?
It's a complete reconstruction, obviously, you can probably reuse your bath house. As you know, there was also, you know, movement in the mechanical space, which is why you had those filters essentially sheer off those fittings. There is significant movement pretty much throughout the site. The, it would be a complete replacement of the pool vessel.
My pool vessel is just the pool, I did replace the pool, right, the hole? Oh, yeah.
At least the holes are repaired though.
What's that?
Then you're such an optimist.
This is, this is very thorough, so thank you for.
This will be put in a report format.
Okay.
And obviously all the other reports that we had collected from the self control. Gathered as well, Jake has a lot of them, I know, but yeah, we're also going to provide a report format for all this.
What would you think it would cost to fix this approximately? I know you can't.
Yeah, I mean, a pool this size, we're seeing, we're seeing brand new, starting from scratch, like six to ten million dollars.
Minus the hole. Minus the hole.
This is, they're closer to saying, it's a large pool, that's why.
Angie, do you remember, you guys paid him the first time for all of it?
I wanna say about five million.
So we're probably double that.
That was with the bathhouse and everything.
Yeah.
Yes. So you'd have to tear up the bathhouse as well?
No, he thought
I think you could probably salvage that. Uh, we have, obviously, we didn't do a full, complete assessment of the facility, we were just tracking down these leaking leakages.
Okay.
So a very large splash pad sounds pretty interesting. Can you fill the hole and make a big splash?
Recommendation is not.
Yeah, like I said, like it said at the end, it's a high operating cost, you know, just you have to water.
If we were to continue to use it, how many years would we be able to use it before? What would happen at that point? I mean, really?
It would be a catastrophic catastrophic failure at some point, that would pretty much render the pool vessel unusable. Like this year, you could probably, um, obviously, we tore out some of those joints. That's that's just joint filler, that's gonna last a year before that starts failing and now you're you're back to your, you know, your main fail-safe is those water stops, um, which is why we took out the joint filler and we tested the water steps. But you could um re-joint it, operate it, keep the um you would be able to use the heaters without um fixing that pipe and you would be able to operate your uh project heaters.
Okay.
We are paying off the debt of the current pool until twenty thirty-five.
Yep.
The debt payments we make are like three hundred and sixty, if you're into seventy thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, I believe the the next group that we have this conversation with is not here today, correct? I think there's way more to talk about.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, we appreciate your time.
That was a lot. And then this, you'll send this to us?
Yeah, I mean, I can send it.
To Jake, yeah.
This is a warrant file, probably drop off. You can figure that out, but yes.
Probably want her to send a couple hard copies too for the files.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are there any safety, I I understand the operational expenses of it, but are there any safety issues at this point, like if we were to go through this season, would it be safe, just expensive? Or should we be concerned about the safety of anyone in the pool?
I don't wanna put my words to it, but I don't think the the footings that the slabs are on are affected yet, we didn't see any movement on them. So uh any catastrophic failure probably just happened to the the pool floor. Um. Uh, yeah, we didn't see any huge voids, obviously, um we tested just those joint locations. Um, I don't think there's, and the the device is so limited for towards depth too, so.
It's gonna really get any erosion around here, it starts small and over a year, it just continues to pull particles of stuff from there, so. I mean, to to go off of Jordan's side, I think you're probably okay to run the year, you're just, now you're dealing with the water loss.
Right.
Um, which I know became an issue last year, you just came out of the water, that were constantly happening on, so. Safety wise, I wouldn't mean unless, I don't foresee anything caving in by any means, but.
No, yeah, you'll you'll see movement in the walls, cause the footings are connected to those walls. Um, they're large floor footings, so, but spread footings, I should say. Yeah, we didn't see any movement, the walls were moved, but there's gonna be something catastrophic, I think, but.
Well, darn it, Jordan, I thought you were gonna come in and say, hey, all good to go.
If it was good news, I don't know, I'd be here. Worst case scenario, but not worst.
Not worst case scenario.
Darn it.
We're talking a whole new pool and it's now doubled in price. Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Safe travels if you're heading home tonight or in the middle of the
I'll be staying tonight.
Good, good. Okay. That the only thing we have for?
That is it, um, do we wanna shut down till seven, Mitch? Okay.
I didn't go through my updates yet.
What's that?
Oh, yeah, let's do
I don't have a ton, just watch us here.
Yeah. Thinking only be good news, Jake, like we are
Jordan, thanks again, Jordan, nice to meet you.
We appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um.
You wanted us to continue liking you, so you brought Jordan to give us bad news?
Um, no, I've been very impressed with them, they've done a good job, they're very thorough. Jordan wasn't the one, I should have a day, he was in the swim trunks down there with the diving stuff on and so um, yes, it was expensive, but I think it gave you guys the answer you need, yeah. Not good answers by any means, but um, I think at this point, we'll have to brainstorm what you guys wanna do. You know, I have some questions out there at that, could we pour another floor in there? Make the pool shallower and try to stop leaking, I I don't know. Maybe there's some other solutions.
Is that an option, you think?
I I don't know, you know, I'm I'm sitting here writing down notes as I go.
Okay, so that could be a solution.
Maybe that's something, maybe that's a way to turn it into a splash pad of some kind if you're bringing in, you know, a false floors, I don't know.
But that doesn't address what's happening under, the erosion that's happening under though, right? So that's
Wouldn't that fix it if you put
Well, if you can get it to permanently fix, I don't think, or permanently sealed, but I don't think you're ever gonna get that, just do your thing to moving.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the problem, is like you said, all this subgrade, we don't fit, I mean, you imagine, you see frosty amount of concrete on the street, let alone soils underneath it that are all susceptible to that.
And I don't know if this is a ridiculous thing to say, so forgive me if it is, but is there a way in the winter to put something out there that keeps it? I'm thinking like a big old electric blanket, right, to get away from getting
That may be a question to you, for instance, in Missouri Valley, due to the way their pool is designed structurally, they have to keep the pool full all winter long. Or else the pool will actually cave in on itself due to some groundwater. So they keep it full.
So they keep it heated all?
Not even heated, no.
Oh, not even, they just let it freeze?
As it freezes, it just gets taller, um, but it's due to the forces pushing in, yeah. I asked the question, how are you guys getting the pool ready for winter? And they said, oh, we're done. And I looked and it's full, I said, yeah, we have to keep it full.
How how old is their pool?
Old, they're looking for a new one here, they're probably thirty years old up there.
Oh, wow.
So things have changed over the years.
Yeah.
I don't know the pools very well, but that's so I'll, I mean, I'll keep you on some some ideas now, and they've been very good about bouncing.
Please, yeah.
And if you guys have any other questions, get them to me and I'll gladly they've been very good at getting back to us on that stuff, so. My stuff then, um, the chestnut drainage stuff was started, it's been kind of slow going, getting parts. Um, they're not gonna be there this week, used sort of a couple emergency fixes, they'll be back next week. Um, which works out well, because I have a couple guys out of the office here this week watching them, so.
Okay.
Um, that should be finished here, I would guess in the next two, three weeks. Um, we made sure, keep reminding them that any rains, they're responsible for any dirt that washes down the hill, et cetera. Um, I haven't gotten any calls, uh Mitch, I wasn't sure if that one get passed on.
Which one?
Someone had a meeting with a sugar maker or a question or something.
They were looking for
Oh.
For something there.
Nothing, project, okay.
They were looking for
And they never know when those questions come in, so that one's gonna be okay, there's no payback or anything right now.
They were looking for a company to do some work for it.
Oh, for them, oh.
Which actually happens a lot, but uh
Jake's used, Jake's used the people coming for him, so I'm like, what?
This is passing on numbers and contacts at this point, but um, as small as that project is, they'll probably just do one pay up when they're done. So no payments or anything on this one. Um, the street project, which is a big overlay project, we have a pre-con scheduled um in a week and a half, two weeks, um, I'm out of town serving tomorrow through the following Wednesday, so I think it's the Thursday I come back. Um, that will get Omni going, they'll have construction with the concrete probably first. We don't have a schedule or anything on that yet, we'll find that out at that pre-con.
Okay.
Um, that one, we wanna make sure you get plenty of notice to the residents, just because the call will start. Um, it is going to impact quite a few areas. Luckily, most of that is a a mill and then an overlay or sidewalk fixes or stuff like that, so. Once we have a schedule or you don't notice that, that way everybody knows what's going on, you know, the website and that stuff. Um, Sharp Street, that contract, um, waiting on contracts back. They called and asked if they could start next week, and I say, guys, the the schools there. Uh, they obviously missed the the working window, they said, no problem, we'll regroup. We told them they couldn't start till June second, so I'm guessing they're gonna wanna get in there pretty quick.
Schools last day is the Wednesday after Memorial Day, I believe.
Yeah, I think I gave a week fluff in there, overtake.
Yep, yep. But that, they officially sent us their last day.
If we have uh snow days, so, so that one will be starting too. Um, I'm guessing that will be a quick week, week and a half in, and I'll um, I have the follow-up on Locust Street that I will get done, I promise. Get the contractor back down here to look at the cracked ceiling potential as well as fixing the manholes. So I have not forgotten about it, it's on the list, I apologize, that was my delay, so. Um, other than that, we're just kind of holding steady, um unless something else comes up. So, yeah, until the next one, so.
I'm gonna grind and overlays, a lot of traffic and
Kind of hoping they don't do it till school's out, so that's something we'll bring up.
I'll start up on Florence.
They have quite a, they'll probably wanna do all the asphalt at one time. So I'm guessing they're gonna have a couple weeks, if not a month, getting concrete ready for that with some of the curb and gutter areas, so. We'll never sure, but definitely a suggestion we'll throw out there. Um, the other oddball one we got on there tonight is um the appraisal stuff. Um, this, I think it's on there later on under my section, I'll just talk about it now, I'm hoping to get out here early, we leave like five a.m. tomorrow, so. Um, this was part of the GMU sewer project, the offsite sewer that GMU bid as part of that and because there's CDVG funds, Arbor Hills.
Oh, Arbor Hills.
The bigger sewer project that I was involved with, not the onsite stuff.
Okay.
There was a bunch of easements that we had to get, that there was a couple things missed um between some miscommunication in SWPCO, my office, um, so unfortunately, the city is the sponsor for that. So they had requested that the city get a secondary appraisal for three properties. Um, it's not gonna cost the city anything other than being reimbursed, it'll run through there, it's all reimbursable. So we put in RFP out for appraisal services for those. Um, I sent it to ten different places, I got one response here as of yesterday. Um, it's about a thirty-one hundred dollars, um, I talked with SWPCO today, they thought that was reasonable and to go ahead and get things moving if we can. Um, they're gonna tell us that Mr. Hughes probably overpaid a little bit for some of those easements, but it will show that it was at least more than fair market value. Um, which should allow ADA to check it off and it'll go on file for later. Just some follow-up, because that uh kind of started when Joe George took over and now Mitch is unfortunately So, we're doing all that, we'll take care of that, we'll get that out there. Um, and then hopefully put that one to bed as well. It's Sharon White appraisal, and I'll send you a copy of the actual
Sharon is a female name, Sharon?
I believe so, yes, it's a it's a personal one. She put a proposal together, uh listing parcels, what they do, they've got lots of experience in the area.
Okay.
She was on the list that SWPCO gave me for potentials to reach out to, so. I know the paperwork and all that stuff, it's just more of an approval tonight to move forward with that. Um, during the meeting, if you could, um, she thought she had it done in three weeks, so we can clear on it and get that one checked off.
Okay.
There are still calls coming in on that project on cleanup and stuff, the contractors been down here the last two weeks doing stuff, um, please keep passing them on to me and I will handle them. Um, unfortunately, we're waiting for some grass to grow, some grass had to be replanted. Um, there's still some other minor issues with the homeowner or two that just are kind of being difficult um that we're working through, but our office is taking care of all that, so. Now that was your project, but you guys deal with the calls at City Hall, so it kind of wraps it back to you guys one way or another, so.
Yeah. Okay. Do we have a, uh, Jamie, maybe this is my question for you, um, you know, the the big signs that you can actually like put in messages where we like type it in, can you see it on the highway a lot? Do we have anything like that?
No.
No? Remember when we were doing the two projects out of town at one time, right, going and streets were closed, remember, folks were complaining that they had to take that one-block detour? Um, there was a lot of like, just, there wasn't enough signage according to folks, and I don't know what that signage could look like that would make people feel like they were informed, I mean, it was on the city side. I think it might have even been in the paper, it was on Facebook, like, I don't know, other than putting things on people's doors, like, how much is just overkill?
This one, coming up, should not be as big of a headache.
Okay.
Um, what they'll come in and do is they'll do one side of the street at a time, a lot of the areas we're fixing, we're putting new curb and gutter in just because it's broken, it's, there's no curb left, um, there's some drainage issues, we've got some sidewalks, they'll come in and do half at a time. So you still have access to all that. Where you're gonna have the major impacts is gonna be, they'll come and mill it one day. So they ran the big milling machine in, they'll go up the hill, they'll go down the hill. You're really gonna have certain areas impacted for a couple hours at a time, it's not all gonna be closed. You'll have trucks in and out, you'll have the big milling machine. Um, that'll probably sit for a little bit or a day or two till they can get the actual asphalt machines in there. They'll close sections of that off, but you can drive on asphalt an hour a day. So it's not like we're shutting down whole lanes of traffic for days at a time. And we'll make sure they get enough, you know, work ahead or detour signs up for those times when they're closed, but for the most part, the homeowners should be able to get in and out as best they can.
Okay.
Yes, it'll be a headache, yes, there'll be construction traffic, but it is more of a temporary impact than like Locust where we had lanes shut down for weeks at a time, so.
Yep. So that's the that sign that I'm talking about, that's the DOT sign that's usually out? Okay.
The message board type.
Got it.
Not cheap. Just a rental is a couple thousand a day, yeah.
Oh, wow, okay. Never mind, um, and second question is, so South Locust, is is there been any talk of, I know that's in the future, but just
So the last round of um applications that went in would not qualify for that. Um, Angie, we talked about this a while ago, the next one won't be until October of twenty-five. And we have to see what categories they will open that up for. So when those come out, I think it opens in October and you have to have it in January or something like that.
We're gonna call for it.
We've got a flag, usually map us on email, they call for projects is what it's called. Um, we've got kind of a rough
It wasn't in their scope of projects for that project, that's why they said no.
Yeah, you see, lots of folks asking since one side is done, not the other, just to be able to get them.
It's not every day you get three months, so I think we'll wait our turnout, that one, hopefully, we, you know, get the chance, so. And remember, that Locust Street one wasn't supposed to go till this year.
Right.
So we're actually a year ahead on getting some of that.
Yeah, awesome. And as someone who lives on it, it's awesome, it's nice and smooth, it's great, it's
Two bumpy minded things, we'll take care of here and we'll be good to go, so.
Any update on the trail? Cause you guys went back to them to see if they would let us re-spec the project for
To hear from the school on if they'll agree to give us that easement. They had a few questions, but we're meeting with them next week.
Next week, okay.
The initial meeting we have with Nicole, she thought they'd be open to it, um, you know, we're actually giving them a sidewalk or a trailer that they could use for future parking. Um, but obviously, it's gotta go through the the school board, so.
Very good.
Oh.
Did you get the railing up? Thank you, thank you, Jamie.
Bye, I'll look at it.
I won't be at that meeting, Mitch, so please keep your posted.
What if you put a railing on the bridge?
The east side.
Did you look at it this year?
I have not been down there yet, I'll drag that on.
Oh, on the slope?
There, there, essentially what happens, their insurance came back in some should do's. One of them was lighting, one of them was an actual railing. We're still, I'm still a tad, still working on getting a cost to get those planks pushed down. Um, and so we kind of went through at a quick call that these are the things we have to do. These are the things that we should do and kind of how to move forward with them, so. The railing was one they suggested, just so someone doesn't fall. Does it meet ADA? No, do we need to meet ADA? Probably not, there's no walkways over there, there's no anything like that. But you would trigger some of that stuff later on if we do the the trail, which we don't, so.
Very good.
See, that was much better news than
You guys have a lot going down here, which, I mean, is good for the city.
Yeah.
Construction impacts are are big, you guys hear the brunt of it, so, you know.
Are you starting to see already the, um, or if there is going to be at all like cost adjustments due to some of the political
Nothing there, um, we did here like on the pipe side. Um, we were told by a couple contractors that are talking seventeen percent increases on water main, on PVC pipe due to some of the tariff stuff. Concrete, we haven't really heard anything about that yet, most of the stuff in concrete is it's here, you're not importing it.
Yeah.
Um, overall, the bidding has actually been very good. Here, beginning of the year, you know, our our street project came in for the sharp underneath what we thought. We've got some water main projects coming underneath the cost, um, so we're hoping it holds steady. But it's all, how many bidders do you have, the timing, whether or not, you know, there's still some uncertainty. And unfortunately, contractors are building that in just to make sure they're covered, so. Right now, we don't have anything scheduled to bid, so kind of hopefully, you know, get through the initial wave of what it is trying to come down, so. Hopefully, it doesn't last permanently, but as COVID, people are subblaming COVID for this raise and that raise and supply chain, it's 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 hard to know what's true or not.
Once it's up, it's hard to bring it back down, too.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jake. Hi, everyone.
Mute it or do you wanna stop?
Let's just mute for ten minutes, it's just ten minutes, take a short break.
I'd everyone to stand and say the pledge of allegiance with us?
The pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I will ask the clerk to call to order. Roll call, please.
Kate?
Eric.
Duran?
Here.
Mitch Ewen?
Here.
Smithers?
Here.
Lyons?
Here.
Can you hear us okay, Lori?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, yep, everybody's in here, okay. At this time, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda as printed.
So moved. Mitch Ewen?
Second?
Kate's.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Kate?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Mitch Ewen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna just move one area at this time to accommodate Chief Johansson. Uh, he has a senior night for his daughter. I'd want him to be able to sneak out there in a little bit. So I'm going to move down to departmental reports and just take item E for Eric, if you would like to.
If we could start with the oath of office for Caleb Severn?
Yes.
Starts Caleb on the seventeenth, and he starts the academy on May fifth.
May fifth, very good. I'm assuming he's here. Okay, we'll do the oath of office. Please come forward.
Raise your right hand. I.
I.
Salmo Square. And I will support. The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of Iowa.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Discharge all the duties.
Discharge all the duties.
Of the officer, police officer.
Of the officer, police officer.
In Blenwood.
In Blenwood.
As now, where your after requires my law.
As now, where your after requires my law.
Congratulations, you're welcome.
Do you need more pictures? You can come up here and take a picture if you'd like to come forward.
Next thing I had to report on is, uh, on the twenty-third, I got an email with a letter from the Iowa Drug Recognition Expert Advisory Board. Um, in partnership with the Governor's Traffic Safety Bureau. Recognizing Sergeant Jacob Power for his outstanding performance and, uh, as a drug recognition expert in our region. Inviting him to receive an award at the Governor Traffic Safety Bureau Conference.
When is that?
On, uh, June twelfth. So, I don't know if anybody'd be interested in attending that with him, but.
Where is it in?
It is in, uh, Ankeny, Iowa.
Ankeny.
The FFA Enrichment Center. I've never been there myself.
Are you planning on attending?
I'm going to do my best.
Yep, keep me posted, see what we can do.
The next thing I have on our agenda is, uh, I request the council to promote Officer John Zach. He's served a year of service as of April twenty-fourth. And fulfilled all of our requirements to be promoted to best officer two. Um, the current pay rate for that is twenty-eight thirty-five for the current even contract.
Effective, I'm sorry?
Effective, if we could make it effective April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth?
That would be his anniversary date.
His anniversary date. I can't believe he's been here a year. Looking for a motion?
So moved. Mitch Ewen?
Second? Duran? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mitch Ewen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
So moved, approved. Go ahead.
Uh, next thing I have is going to be in, I believe it's number four and five, they kind of go hand in hand. We received a grant from the Shieldburg Foundation for twenty-five hundred dollars for the purchase of red dot sites for side weapons. Along with new holsters that would accommodate those sites. So, we're a little short by a hundred and seventy-four dollars, not each, but overall, for six sites. Which, in going over our budget, I should still have our ammunition and weapons fund.
It's not ammunition. We've got a few dollars left. Okay.
I should have enough funds to cover the, less than two hundred dollars to
Okay.
purchase the six. And the good news is Primary Arms, who we ended up going with, uh, has the red dots in stock.
Oh, cool.
Everyone else we checked with is not able to get them currently due to the global situation, so.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the purchase of the six red dot holsters using the reward of a grant from Shieldburg Foundation and then the balance of a hundred and seventy-four eighty-six from the police ammunition budget.
Does that, the wording on that need to be changed unless the, uh, agenda I'm looking at is outdated? Cause it, didn't, Eric, didn't you just say you were gonna buy them from Primary? Okay, buying from Primary Arms. Then it says one seventy-four eighty-six each?
Correct. The each should not have been on there.
I just wanna make sure we have it right when it goes on the record.
Right, it's, yeah.
The difference is a hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
From the budget, from the budget, yeah. That's what I said, okay. So Kate's gave me the motion, second?
Doran?
All right, Smithers? Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Smithers?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Lyons?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mitch Ewen?
Yes.
Thank you. Eric?
So the last thing I have, I wonder, report on tonight was the Bracato security cam, cameras that was previously approved that one of the agenda items. We had some questions from somebody in the hub that was extremely concerned. So I just wanted to clarify, the, the cameras that we were approved for and got the grant to purchase will do license plate reader cameras and/or security cameras. I should say or, security cameras, I suppose. I should say or, security cameras, I suppose, because they can program to do one or the other. The demo camera that we currently have is on the front of City Hall and kind of catches the intersection out here at Vine and Church. It, the cameras will hold the footage, so to speak, for up to 30 days and then it overwrites or we no longer have access to that. Their system isn't a system that automatically feeds to NCIC or it doesn't automatically run the license plate and gives us back any information. We would have to physically be looking for a vehicle or a plate. It is an AI system where it will help find, you have the ability to type in, "I'm looking for a red truck" with parameters and it will pull up every red truck that's been through that intersection for the parameters that you set, for the timeframe, as long as it's within that 30 days. So, the other thing, my thought was if we got a couple, keep the LPR system we have there. We'd use one of the other cameras as an LPR camera and then the other two as just general security cameras. These, these cameras, the fault with them is they have to have power and Wi-Fi. So, both easily fixable, but we don't want to incur more cost given the current budget situation for the city. So the only way to make these cameras work, we're gonna need to tap them into a city building, whether it be public works, the cemetery, potentially down at the park. And that's, there's a lot of one-ifs there. I haven't figured that part out quite yet. I'm also working on policy to make sure that everything's covered as far as the use of these cameras. It's for law enforcement purposes. It's not to play around with or anything like that. I hope to have a policy drafted for the next council meeting, but I'm not gonna make any definite promises on that. The cameras have not arrived yet. Once they arrive, we'll, I'll be talking with Jamie and Mitch and Matt and see if we can't figure out some of the best places to recommend to put these cameras.
Okay.
Was the concern location about where they're gonna be placed or what they're storing?
What they were storing, if we had access to that and just overall Fourth Amendment rights, which the cameras would either be, they would be placed on city property, recording either public streets and/or city property, which, none of which would have an expectation of privacy. They don't search a vehicle, per se. They're capturing a license plate as a car drives down the road. I did leave a photo up there with Donnie. So, in the event we were having an attempt to locate someone driving and we knew what car, what license plate, you can enter that information in and it will give an officer an ID. So, the test camera, I have my patrol vehicle's license plate punched in, so every time I drive by City Hall, it'll buzz me and show that I just drove by City Hall. And that, truly, it's just for a test. That camera's been there for a while. I know at one time, I think Councilman Duran had asked if we had any more LPRs and I'm pretty sure in between Flock, who did not work for us at all, and then Verkata, he came, and I don't remember which meeting it was, the representative at the time was Hannah Swanson and she came and did the demo for the council. I don't know if you guys remember that. Her and Officer Han are the ones that actually put the demo camera up on the front of City Hall. So.
Would we, do we share that information with other, like the county or other cities, if they believe a car's come through?
Yeah, if they were to call us and their officers asking, "Hey, do you have this individual in this vehicle?", we could look and say, "Yes, we haven't come by City Hall this time." But, that's what I said, it would be for law enforcement use. If that makes sense.
Yep.
I just wanted to clarify, so there's no confusion about the cameras. Except the entire system's being paid for via the grant money that we received.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nothing further tonight, unless you guys have questions for me.
Anything else, Eric? Thank you, Larry.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, so at this time, we will allow visitors to address council. Visitors may address council, however, comments will be limited to three minutes. As per Iowa's open meetings law, council can only listen during the public comments and cannot take any action on items that are not posted on the agenda. Council may take issues under advisement and if needed, refer them to department head, mayor's committee, or add them to a future agenda. So at this time, are there any, buddy in? Larry Wyndham, come on up.
Hi.
Hi, Larry.
Larry Wyndham, I live here in Glenwood. Just wanted to give you a quick update on the Glenwood Resource Center. The Glenwood Redevelopment Corporation took possession of the 250 acres or 245 acres on April 10th. So, after lots of discusses with the state and different contracts and we finally got T's crossed and I's dotted. So, just, just so you're aware, right now, some of the things we're working on is decommissioning all buildings because the power plant is scheduled to be shut down June 30th. So, we're working with the state. They weren't able to shut any buildings down because it was still considered an ICFMR, so they had to keep water, sewer, electric, everything going. But now it's starting to be shut down and it, and we're particularly pushing hard for that by the end of April here because then we have to start paying bills. So, and we don't have a whole lot of money, so. So that, that's one thing we're working on. Probably the most important thing we're doing right now is trying to get both Glen Haven and the school systems, the school system's billing 103 with the daycare and everything, and then the 10 units that Glen Haven has, trying to get them on permanent power. We've got all the contracts signed. We've worked on that for, Angie knows this because she's on the committee, but I think we've got everything in pretty good shape, so you should start seeing some activity in terms of, you know, ditches being dug and getting power and electric and gas and water, sewer and internet to both those facilities. So that, that's kind of our main goal right now, is to get that done before we shut the power plant down June 30th. So that's kind of where our main priority is. The other thing is, is we, we did hire an architect, HDR, at Omaha, who's been involved in this for the last two years, so the state's had it made sense to keep them on board since they have so much knowledge to kind of went through the whole process with this. So they're helping us and now we're in the process of doing what's called a request for qualification to hire a master developer, somebody that can come in and develop that site, take some of the existing buildings, be a few, few of them, but try to see if they can convert multi-family housing and condominiums or something like that. So, that's probably gonna be a 16-day to 90-day process before we're able to hire somebody. And that group will be very helpful in terms of helping us decide what that place is gonna look like. Because as you're aware, what we're really doing is trying to get that site development ready for something. We think it's gonna be, tend to be residential, that's what the study showed, but at this point, you know, we've been given dollars and, you know, I guess the one thing I, I brought it up to the county and I want to make it clear here, there's a lot of buildings up there that are coming down. In fact, when the state negotiated with us, they said, "If you guys don't want this thing, we're tearing everything down." It's all coming down. In fact, they were starting to talk, like they were working less in school and the nursing home stay. So, in our negotiations, we said, "Well, we'd like to keep some of the buildings and we'd like to try to keep the fire station or we'd like to keep the girls' cottage potentially or my, buildings that could be used for multi-family housing." So we're gonna do the best we can to do that, but I think it's, needs to be clear to everybody that we, we, we were required by the state to tear down probably 85 to 90% of the buildings. Some of that has to do with asbestos and environmental issues that the state wanted to remove. They want to mitigate those issues and, and of course with all the antiquated tunnels and, you know, all the other stuff that's up there that runs all the steam heat and stuff, that all has to be torn out. So, basically, that's kind of where we are with that, but I just kind of want to give you a heads up on that. We, obviously you guys are aware of the, the two roads off of 34 are gonna happen. That could start as, could start in the fall of this year, if weather permits, so I know you guys are involved with that because you were good enough to approve taking over those roads when they get done. So, I, again, the goal here is to try to get this site development ready, try to get water, sewer, electric, some main lines up there that could be used for some kind of future development. But you're gonna start seeing some activity. I don't know how quickly you'll see buildings coming down, but it'll probably be a while because we haven't hired a master developer and we are really focusing on, on the June 30 date to get the school system and Glen Haven hooked up. So we're not really focusing much into anything else. And we don't have a master developer hired and that's kind of critical because, you know, our group doesn't really have a whole lot of expertise in doing this stuff, so. Anyway, that's kind of what I'm up here, I thought I should do with you. We did something with the county, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry, if the public wanted to follow what's going on, you know, latest and greatest on the GRC happenings, where, where would be the best place for folks to plug in?
We need to start getting like a website or something. We're working on that. We need to create something so people can tap them and see what's going on. We haven't really done, you know, the Ignat Development Site really hasn't been updated much. It's just talking about, here's the rendition, here's what the studies show, here's what it could look like. When we get the master developer hired, they're gonna, they'll, they'll be more specific. They'll come in and say, "Now, this is, you know, this is what we show, but that isn't the way it's gonna be." And they'll, they'll come up with a much better design and process like that, so. But then we need to create something. We need to work on a website or something for the Glenwood Redevelopment Corporation, so.
Okay.
Good point, I appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, Jamie?
How's it going? I'm actually number 10 on the agenda, but I wanted to appear before you to talk about, I'm not sure the ordinance number, but it is the one referencing the food trucks in the city limits. So, I'm representing K Creek and I just wanted to have some future discussions, maybe put me on the agenda for our next meeting, next couple meetings, to discuss maybe a daily license. I know we have the $300 licensing fee. I've reached out to a lot of our food trucks that used to come out to K Creek in the county and they are not interested at all in participating in the $300. I, I was not involved in any way, shape or form in the discussions that have happened previously, but I, I don't know the discussions that have happened. I can go back and look through some minutes, but none of them are willing to come or want to entertain that and we very much would like to get some of those food trucks in. I understand the limitations of the 100-foot barrier or whatever, what have you, within the other restaurants, but I have a lot of people that would, are interested in coming to K Creek, which is what, a block from here, half a block from here. So I would ask you to just add that to the agenda. It would help our business. It will help other local businesses. There are food trucks in Mills County and surrounding counties that are interested in coming. They're just not interested in paying the $300. They would entertain a daily or a weekend fee, so just asking for some discussion about that.
Thank you very much.
Question?
We can't ask questions at this time.
Oh, you're right.
Thank you.
But you can put me on the agenda, so I'll see you next time.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I broke the rules, Larry.
Yeah, that's all right. Anybody else like to speak to council? Okay, then. Number five and six is Jeff Beeson, Life Saving Awards. That has been moved because they had to reschedule the track meet, so he cannot be here tonight, so that will go to a next meeting. So then we will go to committee reports. Park and Rec, the rec user agreements, we can talk a little bit about it tonight and then?
The Life Saving Awards was part of the Jeff?
That, five and six are together.
Together.
Yeah, they were gonna follow each other, so we're gonna move to committee report and I had Mike and Donnie were looking at the user agreements and they met with Ron, so if you want to step up here, Ron, and be at the counter to answer questions. Who wants to speak of it?
Overall, it looks like they're just gonna remain the same as the last year. Added the coed softball league because I didn't have that one from the last one.
Did you ever find out why the $300? Is it just because of their, what, they only?
It was, yeah. It's not like they do practice and things like that. It's always been that. It's one of those, always been that way.
The only other thing, and I wanted to, since Ron is here, I wanted to double check. For the YMCA baseball softball, in my notes, I put down that the city is gonna be doing marking of the field?
Correct.
Okay, because so that's one change. I got down club being responsible for that, but the city's gonna do it.
Which there again, we've always done, so that's on the top of it.
Have you gotten all the schedules from everybody?
I've got a week and a half schedule, so.
From who? Everybody?
No. He just did it for a week and a half.
Just for baseball?
Just baseball.
Speaking of Sean.
Soccer, I don't need a schedule. I just need a starting day and ending day.
Have you gotten that?
I have gotten that.
Okay.
Speaking of Sean, I saw the advertisements up at the ball fields, but they don't seem to have the?
They don't have wind, I talked to Mitch about that today. They do not?
They don't have what?
Wind slits.
The wind slits.
Doesn't take the fence out?
They, that's what kind of caused the damage last time. It's just, they're like sails, so when it's strong winds, it bends and breaks.
Yep.
So.
I understand it was the damage last time was also because it wasn't industrial strength.
Right.
Fence.
The fence.
Put up by volunteers and not production.
It was, yes, but it cleared the 50 miles.
Yeah.
Has Dylan done, started doing all of this? How many times has he done applications now?
He just did this Saturday, Friday and Saturday. He just put the weed killer and stuff on. They've already aerated the fields and then later on, I believe he's going to reseed.
So on the, they've got you down as, so the city's responsible for the fertilizing and chemical application, but that would actually be Dylan for this year and then you take it on after that?
Correct.
Is he providing you with the?
Yes.
Paperwork, so you've got these on, they're on file up here or?
I've got them in text. I'll send them.
Oh, yeah, we need to get them printed and in a file, okay. And then I think sometime Mitch and you and maybe me and Mike might have a meeting just to get everything set, so Mitch can get familiar with the responsibilities and everything that's going on with the clubs. So I'll let Mitch and you pick a time and let us know. I don't have to be there. Mike wants to be there, doesn't he? So.
So you have the baseball and softball club's schedule. Do you have the YMCA's schedules also?
From what I understand, the YMCA is not gonna start until later in June now. Normally, they start pretty close to the same time as, but now they're not starting until June, so I have time to do that.
So we probably need to get these written up. We're not, we don't want to do an action item on this tonight. I think we need to meet with, at least meet with the clubs or send it out to them for their review if they had any questions before it comes to council for you to approve, because I know pickleball needs, we probably need to talk.
What's after? Pickleball has a whole page of requests.
Well, that's not the request. That's, I just took that from the?
But at your last, a last meeting, the pickleball, that was not maybe your last one, but didn't pickleball attend and they wanted you to start?
They didn't want me to do anything. They wanted to?
No, the?
To take the nets.
The nets.
And they just wanted permission to keep them in Young Vision Care's basement instead of putting them in the shed, just, they're afraid of mice.
But they're already under our insurance, aren't they?
Correct.
Okay, and they were before, I thought.
Correct.
Okay, so they?
She just wanted to make sure.
She just was verifying that.
Correct.
Okay.
And then they also wanted to do, I won't say advertising, the mural on the side of that shed.
And the park board approved. You're okay with that?
Yes.
Okay.
That they're paying for, right?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. Just wanted to be clear. Just wanted to be clear.
Okay. Okay. So I guess we need to get these, maybe I can get Danny in the next couple days and get the originals out and update them and maybe if we could forward them out to an email and.
I have had interest from the Little Rams. We used to, it kind of worked out the same price, but they were wanting to have somebody come in and spray and not pay us anything to offset the cost. I talked to him about, we're going to be doing it this year. But he was wondering if they could do it the same way they had always done it. So I told him we would discuss that later.
Is that the football, the Little Rams?
Little Rams, well, yes.
So it's a different guy that's running it now or something?
Yeah.
Okay. So they want to take over doing the mowing or the fertilizing?
The spraying, yeah.
The fertilizing and not have to pay at a $7.50 per?
It was just, that's what had happened years ago.
But then they have to provide payment to show that it was.
And a receipt showing how much they paid.
And all that?
Yes.
I can remember that too. Okay, so we'll have to address that too. So we'll start editing these.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Ron?
I got to come back up there.
You're going to come back, okay. Okay.
The Public Works.
Go ahead.
Is the Public Works Committee going to talk about the committee meeting?
Yeah, who's on, who's that one? Donnie, it's you. Kate?
Well, earlier this evening, we met with Jordan Wagon. Anyway, he's from Burbach Pool. And they're the company that we hired to come in and do an assessment of our pool here down by the high school. There's, as everybody knows, we're still having some leakage, some drainage problem from some pipes. And through their investigation, they found several problem areas at joints in the pool, underneath the pool with groundwater. And they had a very detailed report. And it's something that we're going to have to discuss. In length again, we had a few more questions that came up with speaking with our engineer Jake, possible fixes to keep the pool operating and moving forward. So at this time, it's, it's going to be another process of meeting with Jake to try and figure out the questions that we had moving forward with Burbach to see what their recommendations may be. So wish I had better news, but it's still a process.
Kate, is Jake? He had to leave, he wasn't staying for that. So now we just need a motion on the bid.
To approve the bid of $3,100 for sharing white appraisal.
Yes, for Arbor Hill, said he talked about in the committee meeting. A motion? Yes.
Where's that at?
Number eight?
Number eight.
Number eight. Yeah, there you go. It's $3,100.
Yep.
And the city is not responsible for that.
Will be fully reimbursed.
Will be reimbursed for that, so I'm sorry, go ahead. Yep, so I'll hope Duran in a second.
Wine?
Actually, I apologize, I couldn't hear, which one are we?
Number eight for Eagle Engineering. It's a bid for some appraisal services that they had to fix, it was the GMU project, so.
Arbor Hills.
Arbor Hills. Yes, so it will be reimbursed to the city, but we have to get those done, so. Roll call, please. Wine?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Duran? Yes. Kate?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Okay. Next, number nine is the fair housing proclamation signing. Are there any representatives here for that? Come on up, please.
I'm going to ask the other realtors that are in the room.
Yes, I need. Come on up, reporters.
My name is Julie Eden, I'm with Mankie Auction and Realty out of Trina, Iowa, but I live just outside of Glenwood. And so I'll be presenting to you today, but I'm going to ask the rest of these folks to introduce themselves.
I'm Heather Doncheski, I live just right outside of town, I'm with Better Homes and Gardens Realty.
Amy Hatch from Better Homes and Gardens.
Ben Christensen, Renax Real Estate Group.
We're Aaron and Tara Johnson with Better Homes.
Very good. Do you want to come up here like we did last time and they'll give you the photo? Or how do you want to do this?
Yes, I was just going to say a few words if you wanted to.
No.
But if you're familiar, we won't waste your time.
Well, there's news council, so you can go ahead and.
Okay, and then I'll have you sign it and we can go.
I'll come down there if you want, or it doesn't matter.
I think we'll just have a picture maybe up there with you, if that'd be okay.
Perfect.
So we, as realtors, members of the National Association of Realtors, abide by a code of ethics and we all take an oath and sign basically that code of ethics that says, we believe in fair housing for one and for all. So we abide by the 1968 Fair Housing Act, which basically is equal opportunity for all to buy and rent a home without regard to race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And we believe that it is a fundamental goal of our nation, state, municipalities to uphold that law. And so we have designated April as Fair Housing Month. And we come every year and we ask the mayor to basically sign a proclamation that says Glenwood is upholding that very same law and welcomes all to their community. And we sell every day and live every day in this community, and so we know that you do. And we just love to have you sign it.
I will. Do you want me to come down there and sign it?
I'll, we'll come up.
You just want to come up? Very good.
We'll make it easy on you.
Okay, come on up. Who do you want to take the picture with?
The photographer.
Jamie's the photographer.
Who's the photographer?
Are we standing here sitting?
We'll let them tell us what we're doing.
Jamie, you're going to tell us. How about me? Yeah, how about that?
Is Dan, or is it him?
I feel like we're about this thing when we're sitting, so we can just go ahead and run about this.
Yeah, once you kind of allow each other, you can come in.
Okay, good.
You want to look at the camera, look it down.
Have to pretend I've got to sign it again. Do you have to note retake? Don't move.
Oh, we got one more taking a picture. Want to take one?
You don't want to get a picture?
Did you get one?
Oh, did you?
No, she got it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Oh, I'm going to leave this with you so you can display it.
Put it out on our.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks for coming. Okay, moving right along. Jenny, come on up, you're up again. We're on number 10 now for Cape Creek Brewing Company.
I didn't get any to say anything this year.
Oh, I didn't know if you wanted to make, have a comment or not, like you're.
I'm sorry.
So I didn't know if you wanted to make a comment or not.
I don't, we actually applied, okay, I, we, we had this license in the past, but we didn't use it because we moved.
Correct.
So here we are on square now. So we resubmitted this for the Class C license, which allows us to do mixed drinks, so cocktails.
Okay. So it's a new Class C retail alcohol license?
Yes.
So it's going to be two licensed then, one for the brewery and one for this? Will you, two, it's just that Class C?
No, the Class C will replace.
Perfect, okay. So is there a motion?
So moved, lines.
Do you want to take a second? Kate, second. Okay, any further discussion? Is this just pending local authority at this time? Very good. Roll call, please. Kate?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wine?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Smithers? Done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Tara, we'll start departmental reports, you're up first. Did you get your call back there earlier? Did they call you?
I've gotten my call and that's why I'm here, we still have the email problem fixed. We're on the very last step, Rachel called me back, we're good, you go.
Okay.
They haven't done that, and I'm nervous as heck because tomorrow's the last day. We've got some problems.
Oh, my gosh.
So, but they promised, they know my deadline, so anyway, hi. I'm nervous, did you hear me on the phone call?
Okay, thank you. Is Mike here tonight? Mike Collins?
He was at the last one.
He was at the last one. Okay, then we have Ron, come on up, Ron.
I don't have much neither, but I do have, we had a request from the Nebraska Intermodalistic Cycling League to hold a training, I'll say, down at the Little Rams football field for mountain biking.
For mountain biking?
Mountain biking, yes. I believe it's from ages five to 12, they'll put out some obstacles, that type of stuff. I cannot remember what date it is, I think you guys have it in here.
The 11th, 4th.
5th, 11th?
Maybe, 7th.
Yeah.
Correct. But they, they just wanted to be able to use the Little Rams football field.
Have they been here before? Have they? This is the first time for them?
Yeah, I think they just weren't like a team, some older high school kids here.
Okay. Do they have to sign a waiver or anything?
They, I believe it says they have their own insurance.
So we have a copy of that?
Do we not have that yet?
They do not provide it.
We need to ask for their insurance and before the date.
Do we do that for every special, every event permit? Like for the five Ks and the bike ride and?
If, if they've got their own insurance typically, I know we've gotten it from an event.
When there's a lot of events that are held at the park, if it's.
They usually have.
People can get hurt at, we normally require.
I know the permit says that they acknowledge they have it, so we can just ask for a copy of it.
Right, we just need a copy.
And just for clarification, it's not five to 12-year-old, it's fifth to 12-year-old.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Okay, so is there a motion to approve?
So moved, lines?
Second? Mick Ewen? Okay, any further discussions or questions on this then?
Does that have any impact to the condition of the field?
It shouldn't, I mean, the band practices out there all the time and march around on it. I, I don't see it hurting anything, the wheels of the bike will roll, they're not going to skid or.
Have we talked to the program lead to make sure they're okay with it?
There is, there's nothing that's going on, on that day, so I, I mean, like I said, it's, I don't think it's going to impact anybody and it's not going to damage the fields.
Any other questions? Roll call, please. Duran?
Yes.
Wine?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yeah, I guess I do feel like we need to make sure that if there is something that goes on with the field, that there, there, I can't imagine, Ron, that anything would happen either, but about the time that that field, something happens and it's torn up or anything else and then we're on the hook to get it all fixed, I think it's worth having the discussion that, look, if, if there's something odd that happened, that they would take on the.
The agreement, the agreements.
If it's significant, if it's a normal wear and tear.
Every agreement has a stipulation that they agree to, that they'll use the field no matter what quality it's, it's in. There's a, there's a clause in the, in every agreement.
Right, but if the, if the bike club is going on, if the field is nice and it's not when they leave, that's on us if we don't have something in the agreement that says that they, they should leave the field in the condition in which they find it, right?
That, that's where I'm at, especially if we're not even going to talk to, to the, the group that usually uses that field. I mean, they know the agreement is that the band is going to use it, but I just feel out of respect, we should at least say, hey, do you guys have any concerns? We've, we've, at this point, maybe it's we've agreed to it, but.
Ron will just need to reach out to the Little Rams and let them know that's going to be going on and make sure they're not spraying or doing whatever.
Yep, well, I'm.
Oh, you're doing that this year?
I'll be done already.
Okay, so that'll be done, so it won't be them, but just out of respect, like she said, reach out to them and let them know. Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions for Ron before he takes off? I don't know, okay.
Thank you.
Jamie, you're next.
I need a motion to approve the Street Crewman One job description, which I think you guys have covered together.
So moved, Duran?
Second?
Kate's?
Any questions or discussion on it? Roll call, please. Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Wine?
Yes.
I'm trying to get an interview set up for this Thursday. We've had five.
Five? Oh, are you going to interview all five?
I don't know yet.
Okay.
New pickup will should be here around the 19th of this month, they said, give or take a week. I have been talking with Eric on those new speed signs that he did purchase on locations. And we are looking at North Lynn Street at the city limits, West Sharp Street coming into town, and then Sixth Street coming down the hill toward Glanrod.
Okay. Where the existing speed sign? Where the existing speed sign is?
The new Sixth Street going up through Arbor Hills, that new pavement.
Yep.
Do we have a cleanup day coming for Glenwood? When do we do that?
Is it in this year's budget to do one? Or does that get pulled?
It was never in the budget for this year.
Oh, they didn't put it in last year, okay.
Because I believe what I found was, it was $14,000 last year. So I think Amber never, didn't include it in the budget because it was so high of a cost last year.
Okay. So no spraying cleanup this year.
Excuse me, if I have a question about City Works? Can I ask a question now or later?
Uh, I don't know.
Or is there a place I can address a question about City Works?
You're not on the agenda, I don't know if.
We can get you the number to call after the city council if you'd like.
Thank you.
Yeah.
It's about five blocks and about Chestnut Street. For bot farm.
Okay, anything else, Jamie?
That's all I have.
That's all you have? Okay. Matt Gray, you're next.
Since last month, the fire department entered the Eagle Falls service. Also on the agenda, I have for council to approve volunteer firefighters, pending background checks and physicals. Kinder Gray, Jackson Carr, Alex Stanek. Sorry, we need approval.
Pending the background checks and physicals, okay. Is there a motion?
So moved, Kate's?
Second?
Wine?
Any discussions or questions? Roll call, please. Kate?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Line?
Yes.
Okay, Mitch, you're up. Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I didn't see anything more on here.
Also, the, uh, fire department received a $4,500 grant from Shelburne um, to purchase a new video ringtonescope for the, uh, response vehicle once we get it up and running. A quick response vehicle. It's the new vehicle, video ringtonescope.
What's that?
Basically, when we innovate a patient, um, probably sound off, we'll see the whole course of innovative. That's basically what it does, is like when we run through surgery, um, we have those capabilities, those are advanced level providers. We've already got one on the distraught and they're going to be on the quick response vehicle, so. And then also, we received a $1,500 donation from Chief Max Emmer's family to go towards equipment and fire department. That's all I have.
Nice. Very generous. Okay, sorry to cut you off there.
You're up.
Mitch? No, you're up.
Sure, just have a couple of updates. Um, the bridge, um, well, we already discussed it in the committee meeting, but, uh, we have a, a meeting next week with the school to review their list that they got from their insurance and continue to make, uh, progress, um, getting it opened. Also during that meeting, we'll discuss the potential easement, um, that the state said we needed before they would move forward with, uh, re-sculpt that new project scope for our trail grant. Um, and then geo bond projects. Jake spoke about them earlier, but there's a lot of work getting underway with the, Chestnut Drainage Project is, um, you see the work there in the parking lot. And then we've got a meeting next week with the asphalt overlay contractor. And then, um, Jake said, we should be, um, getting started with the Sharp Street project when school's out. Um, and then also with the geo bond map, we'll be, uh, we'll be getting the, uh, ambulance delivered to us.
Uh, if everything works as supposed to, hopefully, uh, May 19th it should be here. It's going to go to, um, Nebraska Fire School out in Grand Island, we show them off out there for three days and then they'll deliver here.
So that's an update on our geo bond, uh, projects. So many of those projects have come in under budget that we'll probably need to have a committee meeting to prioritize, um, the leftover funding for additional projects.
Get another project, yeah. Great.
And then the DTR, I want to give you an update on the downtime revitalization, CDVG grant project. So you probably saw a lot of work happening a couple of weeks ago and now it seems like nothing's happening.
Yeah.
Um, the holdup at this point is they pretty much finished up like the demolition. And when they did the demolition, when they moved, took the stuff off the front, that's when they were able to actually see the quality of the bricks underneath. So they're having to do, um, change orders on projects and redistribute money and, uh, do fix issues that they discovered. So, we actually have later on this agenda some of the change orders that you all have to approve with some of the project sponsors. And once those get approved, some of the work will begin again.
So have all the owners been notified if they're, if it's one of their buildings then?
Yeah.
They're aware?
They're, they have to work with, they've been working with...
They've been working with owners.
On the change of the work and everything.
Okay.
And then a website update, um, MuniBit has given us a draft and trained us on it. I just need to review every, all the information on there and make sure nothing's missing. And then he's going to work with us on getting the dot GOV address and making that new website live.
Okay.
Probably next month. That's it.
Okay. So then we'll move to Wage Resolution 3709, motion for approval.
Um, so this just as, um, John Zach promoted police officer two, and then Danny, the city clerk, completed her six-month probation. And so that was already in the budget.
Great. Okay, is there a motion?
So moved, Mick Ewen?
Second?
Duran?
Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Line?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing for the full budget adoption for the fiscal year 2026 budget. So, it's 7:53 PM. Is there any public that would like to make comment? Please come forward.
Hi.
Yeah.
Just sent it up on second and nine. I'm sure you're all aware that we were in the Glenwood.
Nope, didn't see that. I don't, I don't get that one.
Uh, and this is not the library. I'm sure it's too late to do anything. I just want to say how very sorry I am that that's happening there. A wonderful library, a big part of the community. The fellow that was talking about the GRC project, the library is important to the GRC project. Everything that we show that shows how big Glenwood is will help make that project happen. And our library is part of that. But I am sorry that you guys haven't seen it. We need to be reading the papers. Everybody needs to read the paper because everybody needs to be on the know what's going on. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? No other public comments? Danny, did you receive any written notifications? Okay, so at that time, at 7:55, then I will close the public hearing. And then we'll move on to Resolution 3710 to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget.
I'll have a presentation.
Sorry. But you have the presentations next.
Yeah.
Yeah. Are you ready for it?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. I'm just reading off the line board, doing the resolution of adoption. A is presentation by city. Yeah, yeah. I wasn't, I wasn't jumping in for a motion. Go ahead.
Okay, um, well, this is sort of a, we've already gone over a lot of this at other meetings, but I just wanted to give some sort of summary before we adopt the budget. So it's not going to go into incredible detail because we did that in multiple workshops and other, other meetings. But the overall revenues, um, this table here shows up, uh, the changes in the total revenues for each fund and for the FY 2025 adopted budget to the FY 26 budget. And you can see an overall decrease, um, in the total revenues. But it's really large because of the CDVG disaster recovery. Uh, but I would like to point out the decrease in the general fund revenues, uh, $230,000 from the FY 25 budget to FY 26 budget. And then the expenditures, uh, this table shows the expenditure totals from each fund and the change from FY 25 to the adopted budget, um, for FY 26. And you can see the overall decrease, the large decrease is because of the CDVG pass-through. Um, but again, I would also like to point out the decrease in the general fund expenditures, um, about $465,000. And so the, uh, one thing that we've all gone over multiple times with the general fund was the revenues were less than the expenditures. And so we have, over this budget, balanced the budget except for $37,000, which we know what that is. It's a plan to transfer to the downtown revitalization project. So, in this budget, uh, we, um, had to decrease, revenues in the budget were decreased by $230,000 and expenditures were decreased by $465,000 in order to balance the budget. The good news is it's balanced and, um, for next year, but, um, how did we get there? So, why did the revenues decrease $230,000? In the general fund, uh, this was due to more conservative estimates for franchise fees and EMS billing, um, to be more realistic with how those things are coming in this year. Also removing, uh, one-time revenue sources that we cannot expect to receive consistently every year, like insurance reimbursements, donations, and grants. And then also limited property tax growth. Um, so for FY 26, general fund property taxes are only allowed to increase $29,722. And also there's a continued decline in the state property tax backfill as they phase out the backfill for the commercial and industrial properties. Um, and property taxes are main revenue source. And there's not a lot you can do with $29,000 when your overall budget is a few million dollars. So, the revenues were decreased. Uh, but then there's also upward pressure on expenditures. Over the last year, um, we've had to make a few changes to personnel budgets, um, and we didn't necessarily make corresponding cuts. We have added a full-time firefighter, we added a part-time police clerk. A lieutenant position was included in the police, uh, budget but never created. And then the city administrator position was budgeted at a higher, uh, pay rate um, due to your recruitment and needing to fill a position. And then some of these positions, like the lieutenant and the, uh, part-time clerk, were cut or reduced in the budget. Um, and then the police and public works union contract was also up this year and a new contract needed to be negotiated. And that contract includes for next year about a 7% increase for the sergeants and police officer fours to help with retention of officers. And then all other officer levels and union street crew and positions will receive a 3.75% increase and then, uh, 2.5% increase for the other city employees. So there's this upward pressure on expenditures, this cut in, this reduction in revenues. So cuts actually began back in December. Um, interim city administrator, Joe George, who's also a Glenwood Library Board member, alerted the council of the need to make cuts. So pretty much since my first day, uh, I've been working, um, to make cuts, uh, to the budget. And we've made a couple of budget amendments and now we're adopting this FY 26 budget. Um, so to balance the budget, we've had to recalibrate the revenue estimates to be more conservative, factor the needing negotiations, and started cutting budgets this year. Um, the budgeted expenditures overall have been reduced about $470,000. And it's been stressful, obviously, but the council and department heads have been great to work with and they understand the problem and that we need to fix it, obviously. So what cuts have been made over the FY 25 budget to the FY 26 budget? Um, just to highlight a few, in the police department, that proposed lieutenant position was removed from the budget. The part-time clerk position is being funded from savings next year from a vacant police officer position. The supplies and services were also cut and their total cut was $68,000 about. Fire EMS budget was cut nearly $20,000. Productions were made to equipment, vehicle operations, and supplies. Streets had a few general fund items moved to the road use fund. The amphitheater was cut $10,000. Parks and Recreation was cut $129,000. That was mostly removing previously budgeted grants that we weren't receiving, our donations, um, and insurance reimbursements, um, that we can't expect to receive over here. And they only have two full-time employees. Um, the cemetery was cut $6,000, they only have one full-time employee. Planning, zoning, administration, and legal were cut $70,000. Um, and the library was reduced by two full-time, uh, positions, but given back one part-time position for reduction of 1.5 FTVs. There were also some small cuts to supplies and services and the total operating cut was $73,000 about. Um, and there was also a reduction for a one-time insurance reimbursement that was in their budget. Um, and then there were other assorted smaller cuts to transfers and other programs. Um, so just overall, this was a comprehensive cut to all city departments as far as dollars go.
Can I ask for a clarification?
You can send me an email. Uh, and then the, uh, city tax rate, uh, history overall, um, the overall levy went up 15.434, went up to 15.4344. Um, and that was due to last year, um, decreasing, um, due to reducing employee benefits rate, um, to spend fund balance. Um, and then increasing in FY 26, um, the, uh, overall, it's, uh, increasing FY 26 because of the debt levy. And then the, uh, CDFL rate, um, also is at the max and that's at 8.04575. It was reduced by the state, um, the max that we could levy at. And then our other special levies, our employee benefits levy is staying the same as last year. The, um, debt service levy went up to 2.043 because of the 2024 geo bond that we took out for some of the projects we talked about. Um, and then overall, um, city comparison to the overall tax rate, we have got that the city of Glenwood, we are the lowest, uh, property tax rate of cities of comparable size in southwest Iowa. And, uh, Council Bluffs was included for context here. And you can also see from the debt levy rate that Glenwood is the lowest of all of our, um, comparable-sized cities in the area. And employee benefits, we're also one of the lowest. Harlan is only lower because, um, they don't have a police department they contract with their county. Um, and then there's also potential, some potential state impacts that we need to watch out for. The state has considered, uh, reducing franchise fees that cities can collect and that's $275,000 of our budget. Then there's also property tax reform, um, that is coming up, that they are either passing this year or next year, that will change our property tax structure again. Then, so some of the budget highlights, uh, we have got the lowest property tax rate for cities of a comparable size in southwest Iowa, uh, lower than Harlan, Corinda, Redo, Gitlin, Hickin, Shenandoah, uh, lower than Council Bluffs too. We balanced the general fund budget. We invested in employees. We invested in public safety. The police-fire EMS continued to make up over half of the general fund expenditures. We also invested in, uh, public infrastructure with our 2024 geo bond and we've invested in the, uh, in the square with the CDVG Downtown Revitalization Grant. And then we also have a nice set aside for pool repairs.
Okay. Any comments from the council? Any questions for Mitch?
No, I just want to say that I appreciate the work that you've put into our budget, knowing where we started and the mess that we could have been in. I appreciate the work and the time. I know the conversations are hard and you catch a lot of the backlash, but we do appreciate the, the detail that you, the time and the detail to put that all together. So, thank you, Mitch.
You came into a very sticky situation on your first day on the job, so. Yeah, I too appreciate all your hard work and efforts. And I also appreciate all the department heads, uh, working with Mitch on the cuts. It wasn't something we wanted to do, we don't take it lightly, so. And as you can all see, every department was involved. And I, a lot of this is in, Joe did an article, he interviewed Mitch and me last week, and it is in our paper and I did read that paper. I just don't get the non-oral, so I'm sorry. Okay, so at that time, I'm going to look for a motion to approve Resolution 3710 to adopt the fiscal year 2026 budget.
So moved, Kate's.
Is there a second?
Line's.
Any further discussion or comments? Roll call, please.
Line's?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
And at this time, we have to move to another public hearing for fiscal 2025 budget amendment number three. So at 8:08, we will open the public hearing for public comment. Were there any written?
I did not receive any.
Nothing? Counsel, have any questions on it? Pretty straightforward in what you've seen? Well, at 8:08 and 30 seconds, I will close the public hearing. Well, at 8:08 and 30 seconds, I will close the public hearing. Do you want to make any comments, Mitch, before I request the motion?
No, this is, this, uh, one is mostly to account for grants that.
Yes.
That our department has received and some administrative corrections.
Thank you. Resolution 3712, do I have a motion to adopt the fiscal year 25 budget amendment number three?
So moved, Mick Ewen?
Second?
Kate's?
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Lyne's?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Kate's?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Good, thank you. Okay, then we do the, uh, moving on to number 17, Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Projects. There's nothing there, but it's 18.
Yeah.
Is it the same?
Nope.
Well, two different things?
Yeah.
Okay, well then, who wants to talk about that?
For, uh, 18, can you, we don't need 17.
17, we are going to remove?
Yeah.
Okay.
18, Community Development Block Grant Downtown Revitalization. This is, um, just a motion to approve this invoice, um, for $2,121 as part of a project. Maybe partially reimbursed for.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved, Duran?
Second?
Smithers?
Smithers? We'll get it to Smithers. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Lyne?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
Okay, next?
Uh, next is this, a motion asking you to approve a motion, um, for change orders, uh, one, two, three, and six for the downtown revitalization project. And once those are approved, we'll begin again.
The address is 4 North Walnut. Correct? For all of them? Just make sure. Who is that owner? 4 North Walnut? 4 North Walnut.
The first one is 4 North Walnut.
I think the only first one is.
Number two.
11 North 5.
So there's different addresses on it. I was wondering why. Okay, so it's not inter, okay. All right.
Number six is also 4 North Walnut.
It's three addresses. 4 North Walnut, 426 First Street, and 11 North 5. Now, I just need a motion to approve the change orders. You can just ignore the address.
So moved, Mick Ewen?
Second?
Kate's?
Any questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Mick Ewen?
Yes.
Lyne?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Smithers?
Yes.
Kate?
Yes.
So with these change orders being approved, when will they get back going on this?
I asked, I emailed them to ask them to let us know when they would be.
The council?
Begin working again.
Okay. The sooner the better. Was there a project deadline date on that when?
June, 26.
June?
Is the, they have to be all done by June 2026.
So they've got a year? A whole year? Why are they not that long?
They, I think that they ought to be done before that.
Well, let's hope.
Uh, I, I think I've heard that they thought they'd be done this summer.
Okay. All right. Uh, mayor's report, I just wanted to let you know I filled out a grant for a, uh, bottle filling station for the park with Delta Dental, and it got word that we were approved for $4,300 for a, yeah, so that was good news. I'm their grant writer. No, it wasn't easy grant. So I was excited about that.
Did you say it was $4,300?
It was gonna be $4,300 at, of course, no cost to us, which is great. And just need to find out when they're gonna be shipping it. And I'll get in touch with Ron. He got out of here before I could tell him, so. Okay, does the council have anything to report? It's your turn. And at this time, I will ask for a motion for a German. So moved, Duran? Is there a second?
Mick Ewen?
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Yep. Bye.
Bye.